Roll call.
Eric.
Here.
Councillor Redarte.
President.
Councillor Garcia.
Yes, ma'am.
Councillor Lucero.
Here.
And Councillor Padilla.
Here.
Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands our nation, America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hoorah! Rule of the agenda. Before we get into that, guys, what's the close session about?
Personnel issues.
Okay, do we have to fire somebody? Is, uh...
No.
Are we looking at a lawsuit from somebody? The personnel issues are to be handled by the manager. Okay, period. I mean, unless there's somebody pending a lawsuit, they're all supposed to be handled by her, and then they go through the grievance process before they ever get to us. And for us to go into a close session on a personnel matter, if we're not firing somebody and nobody's suing us, we can't just go into it to talk about restructuring or anything like that. Those things have to be done out here, guys. And that's per the charter. I mean, we can't just go in behind closed doors and discuss, well, we want to hire this person, we want to hire that person, we want to get rid of this person. We can't do that. That's her job, and her job alone. Period. And that's a direct violation of the charter if we do that, guys.
Okay, we're going to agree on violation of the charter. Call somebody else.
Okay, there it is. Everybody heard that, right? We were going to be in violation of the charter.
It's not a violation of the charter.
It is.
It's not.
You need to read it.
Is it a violation of the charter?
I don't believe so. I don't know exactly what you guys are going to discuss, but from what I've heard, it doesn't sound like a violation.
I'm satisfied with that.
Because I believe it is, guys. And if it is, I will let you know when we come out here. So on that note, we'll approve, uh, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as is.
Take it.
I second it.
Councillor Redarte.
Yes.
Councillor Garcia.
Yes.
Councillor Lucero. Councillor Padilla.
Yes.
Citizens to address the council, got anybody? Nobody. Public comment and discussion on the charter compliance. You just heard Eric say we're not in compliance.
Wait, we're in compliance.
We're not in compliance.
Show me where...
Read the charter. Personnel issues are handled by the manager, guys, nobody else. We have no business sticking our nose into any personnel issues. It is a violation. It's like if you go and you tell the fire chief that you want him to do something, you can't do that, only Laura can. You can't tell the police chief to do something. You can't tell anybody in the city to do something. That's Laura's job. You go to her, you don't go to them people. But that's what the charter says, but you guys, okay, no big deal.
We're not telling nobody to do anything.
Like I said, we'll see when we go to a close session, guys. We'll see what it's about. Approve another regular city council meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the motion of the, uh, Councillor Madas.
Take it. Councillor Redarte.
Yes.
Councillor Garcia.
Yes.
Councillor Lucero.
Yes.
Councillor Padilla.
Yes.
Second quarter finance.
So in your packet, you have your second quarter finance report. Um, I did submit this on time. It was due January 31st. The top, the top row shows you all the categories of funding. The row on the far left shows you all of your, um, funds that are typical for municipalities and government entities. And so, um, the bottom line really gives us a projection of how we're doing. So the first column is cash, cash in the bank. So we have 1,325,851 cash in the bank. And then our investments, we have 6,923,800 in the bank. The revenue that we've brought in as of December 31st is 13,236,404. We've done some transfers between funds, and this is typical process, so that no fund goes in the negative. Um, for instance, your senior funds, we receive grant funding from the state, and so we have to cover those expenses and transfer money in until we get reimbursed. The next row is your expenditures. As of December, we have spent 12,103,675. And then adjustments to the budget. Those adjustments that you see in that column at the general fund, 527,680. Once we've finished our audit and cleanup of funds, we had that much extra money than, um, Kimberly had reported at the end of the fiscal year. So we're putting that in the record now. And then there was 4,000 in special funds that she did not...
Why wasn't that caught in the audit or...
That was caught. So that's after all of our cleanup, when they make sure everything's accounted for. Um, that's our cleanup amounts.
So where does that, where does 531, this will add into...
The general.
Your general fund of your, uh, your 1.3, right?
Yes. And then it shows you our balances, and then the one column is your reserve. Um, we are required to keep one twelfth of our budget in reserve for emergencies. And so at the end of the day, um, over on the far right, we have 9,550,000. So one thing, one thing I would like to point out is that our revenue by mid-year, we had projected we're going to bring in... We had projected we were going to bring in 31,000 in revenue. So by mid-year, we should possibly be around 15, I'm not 31,000, 31 million. By mid-year, we should be around 15 million. So it looks like, um, based on our projections, our revenue is a couple of millions less. But also our expenditures, we projected 36 million and we're at 12. So both are a little lower than we had projected. What, um, I think is good for us to see is that our revenue is more than our expenditures. So that will help us not take our reserve down any lower. So that's, that's a good thing to see. I wanted to point out in the golf course line, which is the very bottom one, it shows expenditures at 484,000 to date. But in looking at that very closely, 115,000 of that was our water bill. And so what we've noticed this year is that our wastewater treatment plant is not putting out as much affluent water as it used to for the old plant. Now, part of that is that we did that leakage study. So we cut, caught some of our leaks, so we're having less water go through the system. Part of that is the new meters who are, you know, putting less water through. So, um, and then the other thing is the COVID, which, um, has been in effect. Our schools aren't open, and some of our big water users aren't open. So Kim is really trying to accommodate for that now. So we didn't use to fill all the ponds at the golf course, and she's filling more now during the winter. So that when we have a dry summer like we had this year, we won't be expending as much. But even though that water bill...
And we can see fresh water to do this?
We had, we ran out of water this summer and had to for a period of time.
Goodness gracious.
We don't typically, um, the summer before was really dry and we used a little bit, but nowhere near this. But that expenditure is also revenue that came back into the water department. So it's offset a little bit there. So I wanted to, those are a couple of the highlights. Um, are there any questions or...
What is the $115,000 correction in the golf course? $116,000.
Where do you see that?
Line two corrections, over here expenditures, 115,000 corrections in the golf course line.
That's expenditure. Those are, um, our fees for prisoners, prisoner care, their medical. That's half year, and that's about normal. We spend about 250,000 on prison care.
Is that for the hospital that we send them to and stuff?
Um, part of that is their medical. Um, the medical...
Hospital housing, everything, right?
Yeah, to house them per day, the per day fees.
That's a year, that's a year right there.
This is a half year.
That's half a year.
Yeah.
There's a county hotel, is there? No.
These are the city prisoners.
All city prisoners.
So the ones we arrest, we pay for. And we pay that to the county because they, um, they're responsible for prison care, and they contract with, um, or Civic, or CCA.
Got a question, Laura.
Yes.
Does this, uh, reflect, uh, the budget cuts that you have, that you had been putting into city?
Yes. So, um, by now, we probably would have been at about 16 million in expenditures, and we're at 12 million. So, um, we've, we've cut back quite a bit compared to what we projected we were going to spend.
And that's good because, I mean, the perfect example is the schools. They're way down, guys.
Yeah, nothing's coming out of it.
They're way down. They're probably at four to eight million dollars this year in revenue because of the amount of students that are down. Okay, and we get these, these lies about green new jobs. Okay, we heard the governor give us all these lies about green new jobs. There are no green new jobs, guys, we're still waiting for them. And now we got the President of the United States telling us green new jobs, and it's all lies. There are no green jobs, guys. So I don't see this getting any better unless they go with the real green jobs and they bring back nuclear power. Then we'll have jobs, because that is the truest green energy there is. But they don't want it, because why, I don't know. You know, we could power this whole nation, guys, from right here in the San Mateo Basin. This whole nation with nuclear power. No earthquakes, no nothing. That's another story altogether. Go ahead.
So, um, I wanted to point out, I know Eric was concerned about our, um, water, wastewater, and trash if we were making a profit. And so far, mid-year, they're down towards the bottom. Um, water, solid waste, waste sewer. If you look at the revenue column and the expenditure column, we are making a profit. Not much in the wastewater category. But, um, solid waste looks pretty good, and so does, um, the water enterprise at this point. So, um, I'll work with Mark. I think, um, this new wastewater plant is costing more to operate, and I think we need to look at how can we, um, you know, keep the cost down as much as possible, or...
Are we still looking at that solar?
I, yes. So that RFP, uh, has been reviewed by Francis, and it's gone back to that, uh, firm. And, and they're going to make sure all the USDA requirements are met in that RFP.
So that should help us there, right?
So that'll, that'll be, uh, net positive. But it'll also be debt, so something to get where.
Yeah, I think we pay about 13,000 a month for the electric at the...
Just at the wastewater plant.
Yes.
So are you saying that financially, we're basically healthy?
We are. And, um, um, our accountant and I and Francis worked, and we did a bunch of journal entries, and we did the cleanup after the audit. But that is something ongoing that Francis and I will have to keep on top of, because as we expend money out, we got to make sure we have money in each line item so it doesn't go into the negative. And move it, move it around to keep everything healthy. But, but we've got that all cleaned up as of today.
Any other questions? How's the legislature's spending?
Um, the grocery tax for this distribution for January was down about a million, or not a million, about 100,000 from the year before. Um, but it's still within the average range. Um, it's not anything, I think, to be concerned about. Um, Melissa in the water department did let me know that our revenue in water sewer, it has been down. And, um, it seems like people are paying late. So that tells me our, can, our families and citizens are struggling paying their utilities.
Anything else? I'll entertain a motion to accept.
I think there's a resolution in there. If we could pass that resolution as a part of it.
I make a motion to, uh, as the financials present a... Resolution 21-1711. On the motion?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Roberto. Councillor Redarte.
Yes.
Councillor Garcia. Councillor Lucero. Councillor Padilla.
Yes.
Let's pass this with Ramon and sign it. I'm waiting, man. Has it, you guys, there? Okay? Um, next. Grand's Police Department, annual report. Oh, Washington Phase 3, sorry. Hey, I want to hear Mario.
Yes, sir.
He missed last time just because, I mean, he needs to get up and talk to us.
Thank you. Uh, I would ask Mario to come and introduce, uh, this topic. Thank you for your consideration on Washington Avenue Phase 3.
Good evening, Mayor, and council members, Mayor, audience. Happy New Year, first of all. Uh, given the current environment, to really continue to just have our health as a blessing in and of itself. Tonight, wanted to present a little bit of background. You should have a PowerPoint presentation in front of you titled Phase 3, Washington Jefferson Avenue. A little bit of background. Couple of years ago, there was a mini drainage master plan that was completed, you know, project, uh, that came out of that as a phase one on the Jefferson Storm Drain that was completed about a year ago. Continuing on that, that very same plan to resolve some of the flooding issues that some of you can recall from 2006 with all the flooding around Jefferson, Washington, Mesa View Elementary School, Future Foundations, all of that area down there. There's a phase two, and, and so we call that Washington Avenue. We have been actively working at the, really at the direction of this board through 20, late 2019 and 2020. Uh, in 2020, we were unsuccessful in securing City PG funding for the first, what we've called the first roadway, at least for second phases of Washington, uh, drainage project. The manager was part of a debrief meeting with the state, and, uh, I, I can say with a high level of confidence that the state feels that the city did have a strong application, and so we're resubmitting that this year for construction funding. And so, uh, before you, tonight, if you go to the third slide, we're really focusing on that green area, the green dashed area, uh, Washington Avenue. It's delineating in green, going your right to left on the, on the drawing from the red dashed line over to Enderman. That stretch of Washington is a task order for you before you're here today to design that final stretch, all of this storm drain. It's 1,425 linear feet.
14 or 14?
Uh, yeah, 1,425.
Okay.
Councillor Padilla. And, um, in addition to that, I have another slide that will show you some of the elements that are important to you. Uh, but essentially, that will capture all of that drainage, uh, and then we will be looking at an alpha, uh, there for, for that drainage, which, uh, at the current time is still, we're looking at, uh, down through the Henderson platted right away, and ultimately either into one of the arroyos or ideally into a bio, what we've been calling a biopark, uh, that would be developed on the south side for, for long-term flood control. I'll, I'll talk a little bit about some of the other elements. Before I do that, uh, slide four, just to remind everybody, why are we doing this? Slide four identifies a hundred-year flood plain. So you can see Mesa View Elementary School is in the flood plain. The Family Foundation is, is also in the flood plain, and several of the apartments and residential structures now. We are making headway in terms of the drainage infrastructure. Jefferson has drainage infrastructure now. Washington Bridge just opened up last month, uh, so that, that's a big positive. And so as we start putting the proper infrastructure in, and as we start moving into the near future and widening the Grand Central Royal and the Rio San Jose, we start positioning the city in the future to remove these flood plains, but we're, we're not there yet. We're a few minutes away. The, the last slide that, uh, we present here is the purpose of need. Again, why are we doing it? Well, alleviate the local flooding. So you've got a couple of photos there that shows standing water, even in smaller, against smaller, high-frequency, low-intensity, nonintensive. Normal storm events that we get during the summer. Want to address the transportation and drainage issues. We know that when there's standing water, people are driving too fast, it can be dangerous. Hydroplane gets live use, traction on, on the asphalt, so it's important to resolve those issues. The third one is promote walkability with the new sidewalk and South Side Washington Avenue Trail. So, so as part of, part of the overall planning in the last few years, this governing body approved an MOU, the school board approved an MOU. The first capital project was at Pet Bridge over at the high school. That was part of the MOU. The funding for this task order that's before you tonight is co-funded by the school district and the city as part of that MOU. And we are working with the DOT through the local government road fund.
Is that a 50-50 split?
Uh, 75-25. Great question. Thank you for that, uh, Councillor. The 75% grant, uh, DOT, 25% match. You're both awarded funding. You got more funding than the school district, which is typically true when, when the, the DOT generally gives a bigger pocket of money to municipalities and a smaller pocket of money to, to the, to the school district. So if you're saying, is it 50-50 between the city and the schools? It's not, uh, I believe round numbers. It's around 35,000 total from the school side and about 190,000 on the municipal side.
Thank you.
Um, so in addition to the design, just like the high school, we will do the programming, uh, of the entire school, and we will set the finish floor elevations in the early concepts when they build the elementary school, which is, uh, next to be replaced.
No, new water's next, buddy.
New waters?
New water.
New water.
New water, which is next. Mesa View won't be probably being more than four or five years.
Okay.
It's fine, it's fine.
So, so the idea here, though, is that we want to set all of the drainage. So when they develop the new school, they're not having to deal with it on their own. The programming also helps to resolve some of the issues. I understand there have been loading-unloading zone issues, which are pretty normal, right, for schools in the morning and the afternoon? Uh, and so we would be looking at all of that. And so some of you that may have been aware or have been involved with the high school, uh, you would recognize that those committees are, are made up of school representatives, staff, as well as public at heart, as well as city. So it's a very comprehensive steering committee. It sort of lays out what that, what you want that program to look like. And then ultimately, by the time we design it, all of the improvements on the city's right-of-way and look for the funding, the schools should just come in and their, their finish floor is set, and all of the major elements are set to where it functions in concert with the public right-of-way. Meaning it resolves the flooding issues and the transportation.
Does that speed up anything?
I'm sorry?
Like if this, if we agree on this project and it gets done, um, like when would be the end of this, like the project would be done?
Well, the, the... The final piece of this, Councillor, would be, uh, well, I would say there's a couple of final pieces, but the big one's going to be the biopark.
So you got to have that with the finishing with, uh, the drainage down at Enderman. So if the school looks at it and says, where, where's the next piece of land? That's almost basically shovel-ready because the infrastructure is replaced. Does that ever speed it up?
Um, so, so it will, well, number one, it'll speed it up because we're designing now, and we don't have construction money, so it puts us in a position to secure the money. That's how we got the money for Washington Bridge, because actually you paid for the design of your own general funds, so that's how we got the money for construction. This is the same strategy here, is get it ready so we can start looking for funding this fall for construction into next year. The biopark, uh, that's a pretty exciting opportunity. We're not just talking flood control, we're talking land use and economic development. We want to set it up to where it becomes a menu for people who want to bring some industry. That's the idea.
Get that on the board.
So if we, if we can get people behind it and it's championed, it's a push.
So Mario, on this amount of the 203,000, um, is that the full amount we would pay, or do we pay 25% of that amount?
There should be a...
Where at?
There should be a spreadsheet attached to that.
Okay, oh, okay, I see it's actually 267.
Yeah, there's a column for the DOT portion, which is the grant portion.
Okay.
And a column for the, the local match. But I did ensure there's a, if you look at the roll with the smaller amount, that's the portion that gets, uh, allocated from the DOT to the school district and then redirected to pay towards the project. And I apologize, I should have thought about that. It made it a little more clear. But there is a roll in there, the smaller LGRF is the school's portion that they redirected towards this project.
So it's costing us 49,061 dollars.
Um, the total, if I may, I'm sorry.
DOT has the DOT's match, ours is the next one.
I think it's plus the eight.
Plus the eight, eight rounds.
Yes. Yeah, 49 plus the eight.
49, right? And the 8,000 is the school's. But that ours too.
No, it is yours. In the, in the prior MOU, the city would pick up the, the district's match.
We got 57,000 dollars, guys.
I think this is one Donald had put in the budget for this year.
Correct.
Yes.
Yeah, we had 34,000.
Yeah.
I mean, it's got to be done, guys. We need the biopark, we need all of that. I mean, there's so many things we need, but that's one of those blood projects that I started 14 years ago, guys, when I first got here.
That's right, yeah, 14 years.
And this is just finishing it up. Any other questions? If it's been budgeted, guys, our money's there, let's do it. I'll entertain a motion. For Washington Avenue Phase 3.
I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, Washington Avenue Phase 3.
Second.
Do you have to approve it for the amount, or are you...
Well, it'll, it'll fluctuate, won't it? Because of taxes and all that, or do you want us to prove it for the 50?
That includes taxes, man.
Okay, so then it'll be for 57,300.
It's a, the total amount on the cover line, which includes the DOT match, the 203, I believe.
203,733,34. And that makes motion reflect the 203,733,34 for the total amount. Okay? Uh, second.
I'll second.
Councillor Redarte.
Yes.
Councillor Garcia.
Yes.
Councillor Lucero.
Yeah, I'm confused.
Councillor Padilla.
Yes.
Okay, so let's unconfuse it. Now it's voted, what do you want to...
No, 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 I'm good. I just, uh, that was budgeted, right?
Yeah, that's, that was my concern.
Okay, cool.
Instead, it was in the budget. Okay? Thank you, Mario.
Thank you.
Are you going to run off?
No.
I should make you stay till the end, because you were from last meeting.
Absolutely.
Saint Chris on the phone, I don't know about that.
It builds character if you can come here and, and, you know, present to this council. Appreciate you guys building the character.
Can you take this abuse?
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you, Mario.
You're very welcome.
Uh, Grand's Police Department.
The police, who...
Good evening. Mr. Mayor, Councilman, thank you for allowing me to get here this evening and, uh, give my, uh, annual report for 2020. Um, when somebody asks, are you going to read the whole thing? And I'm, no. But I do want to hit, pretty much hit the highlights here. I would like to point out, uh, uh, you'll see that in 2018, we had about 17,800 incidents, uh, or calls for service. Uh, 2019 was 17,200 or so. And 2020 was 21,900 or so, give or take, in that, uh, we had, uh, in 2020 of almost 800 arrests. I point out, uh, how it's gone up, and I know, uh, since I, since I was hired two and a half years ago, I talked to everyone about our fixing broken windows program and our, uh, thoughts about, uh, community-oriented police... community-oriented policing and we started, last year, we started up, we were able to start up the street crimes unit. The, in that, for 2020, we all know that what happened is COVID. So people started staying home, more calls, more everything started happening. The street crimes unit, in the few months that it's been running, has been a tremendous success. We've arrested several, actually a couple of our very high-ranking drug dealers in town. Now, I want to emphasize that the street crimes unit is not just a narcotics task force. It's not just for narcotics. It's, when I first started this, my vision was there's certain folks in town that we arrest or deal with daily. I can name them, but Councilman Garcia has had run-ins with one of them several times. And you're not the only one. And so here's a frequent flyer and so
Stories from my house and shit. I'm like, what the hell is going on here?
So what we're doing is, some of these folks, some of these homes of folks, we, when we find out, when we get their neighbors are saying, hey, these people are selling drugs, these people are this, and we start focusing on those folks and figure out what we're gonna do to curb that. And so that's happened. So that's created extra calls for service, extra things. Want to point out real quickly, though, we all know what Grants, the city of Grants is as far as our workforce, our poverty level, and that. If you go to the first page there, after the cover there, you'll see the burglaries for the year 2020. If you'll notice, January, February, March, burglaries were high, then all through COVID, they dipped down. And what happened through COVID, let me tell you. Everybody started getting a six-hundred-dollar extra week boost unemployment. But guess what? We found out is that it's not just people that got laid off. It's people that's never worked, that they, we found out how, there's a couple of folks in town that were were hearing hearsay that there are people in town that are getting these people that don't work, getting them this unemployment by saying, I'm self-employed and I lost my job. And so these people were getting a thousand dollars a week now and have been. So you'll notice where the burglaries dropped off, we have a lot of patrol out and things are happening there. We have the street crimes unit that's focusing on a lot of stuff. But also, a lot of these folks that are otherwise, burglizing homes and doing stuff, yeah, they're making money now, more than some of my cops, actually, which is pretty sad. The street crimes unit again is, again, not focused primarily. We're doing, by virtue of what they do, we do a lot of narcotics work. But we're also getting a lot of folks off. Councilman Vartet came in with one gentleman here last week, complaints about some of his neighbors. And we've addressed them. You know, we work with the city, with the citizens to try to deal with their problems as it comes up. I made this statement when I first started here that this isn't just a law enforcement agency. We are, and I'm speaking to every citizen, every citizen in the community, we are your police department. I appreciated when Councilman Garcia and Councilman Vartet came in. Councilman Garcia had mentioned to me, and I had everybody over for coffee and a little get-to-know-each-other briefing, but Councilman Garcia says, you know what I'd like to see? I'd like to see transparency. And so I used to give a quarterly report, well, now it's been monthly. Because I want you all to see the department, what's going on with our police department, where we're at. We have now, in the last two years, less, way less validated complaints from citizens about police officer conduct than ever in the past. And so we are becoming a professional department. I can say that under my leadership, the leadership of the two lieutenants that you see here tonight, we are creating an atmosphere of leadership within the department. Young men and women that are leading the community into a future that I believe is bright for Grants. Yes, we have economic problems, but one thing that we're really pushing is, and we're really working on, is reducing the crime. So people, folks that are homeowners, folks that they have less fear of crime going on down the streets. And that's, we get many accolades, many accolades from citizens every day that, thank you so much for everything you guys are doing. I've never seen it like this before.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
The burglary, you said January. Obviously, we just got done with January, but did you see that maybe the trend line?
That's 2020.
Was 2020 or no?
Yes.
No, but last, like this last January? No, 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 but you seen, this last January, 2020 was your worst month, right? Kind of looks like it was.
Well, that's the worst last year.
Yeah, right. No, but did you see 2021?
I don't know, honestly, I don't know, LT Modus can say how many, how many burglaries we've had in 2020, January this year.
Because that's what you're asking, right?
I have a feeling, do you see the trend line going down as far as last January compared to this January?
I'll tell you what I see is, we get the thefts, this gentleman that we arrested, two days in a row, actually.
Right after he went to jail and got out with injury. Twelve hours.
Burglary, theft, burglary, theft. So we're getting that, but we're charging them, we're catching them. And that's what we're getting. We're getting closure rates that are higher than they've been in the past. Especially when it comes to thefts, we're getting that. Again, the street crimes unit under Lieutenant Modus is last year. I'd come out, he comes out early mornings often and will truly just walk the streets and find some of these folks that are walking around. That's what we had in 2019. 2020, boy, that really started going down because we were having, we were coming out, you know, lieutenant could come out and we would work that and catch these guys and work on that. So that's kind of the direction we're going. We have, honestly, I can promise you the world, but I promise you this. You have a group of leaders that have worked for the city of Grants right now, young men and women that care, care about the community, care about the job they do. And they're not here being bullies to citizens. They're not here trying to make a name for themselves and try to treat victims or citizens poorly. Any complaints that we get to that effect, we find out. We look at the truth of the matter. In closing, I'd like to just say something real quick. COVID's been tough on the city, I get, and we've lost, we've closed positions and the PD's lost a few positions.
Lost as in how? She?
Well, I had an IT lady quit and I've had two school resource officers, which isn't the city's fault, but the school was saying they weren't gonna build a budget for it. I just talked to Max this evening and he's hoping, beginning like in August, we can start advertising if, depending what happens with COVID and vaccines, right? But we lost a patrol position. We had two sergeants leave last month and we
How did we lose a patrol position? How does a position go away? If we have someone quit, we should be hiring that position.
Well, that's a budgetary thing, sir, that I'm not sure if you
The budget for the police department was set for our police department.
You didn't lose the position. You filled it with one of the service aides, right? Is that what we're talking about?
Right. So we lost the position and then, yeah, the hospital, so the service
So we don't have service aides at hospitals?
We have three now. We can't fill that position because people that are getting unemployment are getting a lot more than fourteen dollars an hour.
As far as applicants?
Right, we're not getting, yeah.
Not getting applicants for that.
But the, right. So my appeal is this. I understand the crunch thing and, you know, I'm not sure what's gonna happen with that service aide that is now working for the city in essence. There was issues there. But my appeal to the council and everyone is this, is if we reduce, by losing just that patrol position, what's happened is it reduces
You said it again. We're losing a patrol position. Explain that, Billy. I just, how did we lose a position? If we moved a service aide into that position, then that position's still there as a police officer, right?
Right. No, the service aide is not a police officer. He is a service aide that will be assisting patrol. He was moved in after that.
So then why haven't we hired a patrol officer for the patrol position that's been a gap?
Well, I was told that we
Because he lost, the hospital requested
The hospital requested that the service aide not come there no more because they had a personality conflict. I've been very aware of that one.
So you obviously know all the details about this and it's a personnel matter.
About the service aide.
And if you would like to talk about it during the closed session, we can talk about the personnel matter. But we should not be talking about it in public.
Yes, we should, especially if we're talking about losing a patrol position.
We did not lose the position.
Okay, then let's hire a cop.
He doesn't have the money in his budget because the service aide is filling that position.
But that was budgeted for the service aide. We had it in the budget for the service aides that were working.
The hospital pays for the service aide. So we did not budget for our service aide.
Now that he's getting paid, the hospital's service aide doesn't have a paid position there. They want to fill it, but due to the crunch, they can't do it.
The hospital service aide
So the hospital determined
They contract for four positions. They contract the city of Grants and they pay the salaries for those four positions. Once he, that service aide at the hospital, that position changed. He became an employee of the city of Grants. So I can't really speak to that other than, my appeal is this, is that we don't lose more patrol. That in the future, and I'm not gonna, I hope the fire department and the road department and every other department that's hearing me speak right now doesn't take offense, but I will say this. It takes a lot more to train a police officer. They're not ready to be on their own for at least two years of training. It takes, they're on a twelve-week FTO period. That's one officer that is taken away from answering calls on his own to train this officer. Then they're in the academy for four months and then they come back and they're still on coach period. And my point is, is that those positions, we do not ever really want to hire non-certified if we can't help it. By losing positions, it reduces our effectiveness to be proactive. One of the things that, and I'm just gonna say this, one of the things that's helped us in these last two and a half years, when I first got hired, we were reactive, okay? We were reactive. And so we were answering calls, but there was no proactivity. And so in the last two and a half years, we've been able to become proactive. And I'll tell you, the primal element, I've had him move out of town within a month, one gentleman even. And I'll say this, is with this proactivity is keeping folks safe. It's keeping folks understanding that we are on a job as a police force, but also that the city government actually is there. Now, I understand, I'm not being, please always understand that I'm being myopic here. I understand there's roads, there's infrastructure, there's all kinds of considerations. But I would say this, and we may not fill the pinch today or this month if we were to lose more patrol or whatever positions, but I will say that we will see long-term effects that will outweigh the benefit of saving that extra money. And so I just wanted to say that. I hope I haven't spoken out of term. My appeal is just that, you know, the folks at the fire department that had twenty-one hundred calls last year, we had twenty-one thousand calls, almost twenty-two thousand. We assisted them on their calls, but we had the other ones. And not taking away from the great job they do at all, at all. But when we have an element in the city of Grants that is bringing crime purposely to our city, it's very important that we understand that. Anyway, I'd like to close there. And again, if I offended anyone, I heartily apologize. But I hope that my words will be good, officer.
Yes, Steve, how do you stand how you're still shorting?
Well, we, you know, my city manager said we have, now we have that police service aide that we're having to train and do work with and see how that's gonna work. But we're short because we're short the school resource officer whom we were able to use because of the contract of time. We were able to use during any vacation time or summer or time they were off. So the schools are off. So that's a position that we no longer have. And then
No, the schools lost that position. We did not.
We didn't, we didn't.
No, no, no. We paid partial. I think we
We did. We took that officer because she was on the train.
Oh, no, she's a detective now. Yes. No, so we didn't lose the person. We lost the position. And then the one Grants position we lost, that also Grants PD position, is that patrol that is now filled by a service aide. So ultimately, I'm just asking that, you know, that we consider that. We're able to do our job. We had to put one of those, one of the street crimes unit back on patrol. That's manageable. We can work with that. But I'm just asking that, that we, it's a tough thing. Let me just say this again, it's just, communities throughout New Mexico have come to realize one thing. That police officers trained, certified with good record are a commodity. I have a gentleman right now that is one of our best officers, patrol officers, that is now considering going to Sandoval County. I'll tell you why, because he's gonna have a five-dollar an hour raise and his para is gonna cost him eight percent less than it costs here in Grants. And he's gonna get eighty percent retirement. So when these communities, and I get it, but these communities have learned that APD, Verlano County, officers pay nothing into their para. And so, and they're a tier-one agency. I get there's more money there and all this and, and believe me, I'm not here to bash anything. What a great city to work for. But we have to realize that this, us, the fire, and you guys say it all the time. Thank God for the first responders, the first responders. If we can pick that para up in another year or two, to where we're a tier-one now, would be awesome. If we'd say that, and those are things that are long-term telling that officers would stay for. It wouldn't cost the city a heck of a lot. This year, I realized it's an impossibility. But yeah, maybe in the future.
So to find a certified officer, I mean, it's just like, it's pretty difficult.
Well, it is, but we've brought a lot of certified cops here for this position. If I was gonna fill that, I have a certified young man wanting to become over, good cop.
Not unusual for him to jump ship, you know, even all the time or yellow or whatever.
Right.
But the key is to get one that's clean.
Right, and that is
A lot of them change agencies because they've got disciplinary action pending.
Well, I'll say, I will say this. I will say this, that when I was a sergeant back in the day and Fred Brodsovic was here, it was kind of a hard thing to recruit out of the city of Grants. And they didn't pay that well. But there was a morale back then. And then over the years, a lot of people, a lot of cops jumped ship. Now, we've held our numbers. We've been fully staffed for a couple of years now. And every time we have a dip or somebody leave, we had a couple leave the state police. We had one go to college. Every time we have a dip in staff, we're able to replace them with a certified officer or we've replaced them with school, I'm sorry, school resource officers, PSAs. Two PSAs will get that trained up. And so people want to stay. People really do. There's some loyalty. But again, we hope that we can go into a future.
Anything else for the chief? Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, sir.
Ladder truck!
Does everybody look so serious? Hello, Andrew. Glad to see you, chief. Good afternoon.
Yes, sir.
Gina. Good evening, Mayor, City Manager, Council. Does that sound fun yet?
Yes, sir.
How you doing? Everybody looks so serious. I was told to keep this brief. That way I can keep your attention. So we did talk last council meeting about ladder. The truck we're looking at is right around fifteen thousand dollars. It is an older unit. It's used. Comes out of internal Leo, the builder internal Leo. We talked about different things. What else could we do? So we just threw this together real quick. We can read the whole thing and I'll answer any questions, but I just want to go to the last page and I want to talk about Grants that we, that the city of Grants, our chief, has applied for and received. The Department of Health and the PRC was four-hundred-and-sixty-three thousand, four-hundred-and-forty. Large purchases with fire protection money. We've purchased just over a million dollars of stuff with fire protection money that comes from the state. Combining the DOH, PRC grants and the fire protection money, about a million and a half to date is what we've spent on buying units. Our old ladder truck, our engine three engine, all of our units are being funded through these grants and the fire protection fund. We did in 2008 receive a capital expenditure
from the city uh that came out of the grocery receipts tax of thirty-three thousand dollars and that bought engine four, pumper four. Pumper four is now no longer a service, it's it's seen its days and it's been set to pasture. Um, so since two thousand eight to date, for capital expenditures out of the GRT, we did spend thirty-three thousand dollars. But we have spent one, just over one point five million using other means other than city money to purchase our trucks. If we go out to try to get a larger or not a larger truck, a newer truck with less miles, less hours, because we've got to weigh both options. Make sure that, okay, it might not have ran but twenty-eight thousand miles, but it's set for eight hundred hours running somewhere, we have an issue with that. Um, and I don't want to take away nitty from the city because I want to put it out there um that the city does cover our salary. So between our grants, between the fire protection fund, we try to do our best to not ask the city for a whole lot of money. So eight hundred thirty-five thousand and change, the city is paying for our salaries. That's for our fire chief, our nine firefighters and our admin assistants. So, I mean, trust me, we're not saying you guys don't do anything for us, we know where our salary comes from. Um, so I just wanted to touch base on a little bit of that. Lieutenant Valencia, I wanted to talk a little bit about um why we need a ladder truck, the purpose of it and relations to ISO insurance ratings, stuff like that. So Lieutenant Valencia.
Welcome back, Andrew. I am so glad that you're okay, brother. Welcome back.
Appreciate it very much. But um, don't want to make it about me, I want I want to make sure.
Making it about you.
It is about you. Taking care of the city, you know, we want to take care of the city. Um, you know, we did concur with the city manager, right? You know, that ninety-three ladder truck is old. Uh, it's old and it and it probably isn't feasible for for our department. Um, and and to concur with her, you know, what we're looking at is it in in when they purchased it, when Burnleal purchased it, they purchased it from another agency also, so it'll be third, third hand. So what I did is I went out and I um kind of did some digging, kind of some ideas, um, what's going around, what's going on around the county. As we know, a newer truck is gonna cost more money, you know, um. But newer doesn't always bring better. It always, you know, for some reason, the big ladder trucks, the hundred-foot ladder trucks, uh, they tend to be a lot cheaper than the seventy-five-foot ladder truck and I'll tell you why. The seventy-five-foot ladder trucks end up coming from cities like us that are smaller, they use them a lot less often. The hundred-foot ladder trucks come from bigger cities that use more often. So you see the balance there, that, you know, the bigger trucks are gonna be more expensive, but not always, or a bit less expensive, not always worth it. So just to give you some information about around the county, uh, Burnleal, like I said, replaced their, this truck, this fifteen thousand dollar truck with an eight hundred ten thousand dollar ladder truck. You know, do does the city have money like that to to this expenditure? Probably not, you know? That's a lot of money for for what we're looking, you know, even Acoma, just down the road.
So they had this ladder truck and they ended up replacing this fifteen thousand dollar ladder truck that they got rid of. They ended up purchasing a a truck for eight hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars?
Eight hundred and ten thousand.
How did they get the money? Oh, this Burnleal?
This Burnleal. This city of Grants, this is not Burnleal County.
Anybody in the Rio Grande corridor, from Las Cruces to San Diego. Nothing but the Rio Grande corridor.
But that's the price of the new truck?
That that's the price of the one they purchased. That's the price of the one they purchased. I mean, we could start at at five hundred dollars and we could chip beyond one point six million. Like, uh, also down the road, Acoma purchased one, a hundred-foot ladder truck, a hundred-one-foot ladder truck platform for a hundred or one point two million.
Okay.
So so, you know, we want to, you know, we're not coming here to ask you for millions. Now, if you want to give us a million too to purchase a ladder truck, I'm definitely not gonna stop you. Because we did listen to a city manager with that good um saving money and putting some money in savings and all that, that's that's great, so. Throw some our way as well. But, um, you know, just just to kind of um un, for you to understand, everybody knows um fire protection funds, right? You know where they come from?
No, sir.
So we all have a household and we all pay insurance, right? The insurance that you pay is based on how good your fire department is, how good your dispatch is and how good your water system is, okay? If one of those three fail, your insurance rates go up.
My ass is gonna hop because I don't know what that is.
So so when they go up, when they go up, more money goes to the insurance companies, okay? But less money comes to the fire department unless we improve. So so do you see where that kind of, it fails, we fail the city if we don't improve, okay? We fail the citizens. So in being, that's why we're asking for a ladder truck. To stay at class four, there's a rating from one to ten, ten being the worst, one being the best. We're a four right now. Ultimately, our goal is to get to a one. Um, in order to get to a one, we have to have more personnel, more equipment, uh, better water system, better dispatch, there's a number of things that that need to improve. Um, but definitely where um we can stay a four is with the ladder truck.
Yes.
Okay? We don't want to say, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna lose our ladder truck and we're gonna go to a five. What's gonna happen is the insurance rates are gonna go up for you all and every citizen here in Grants.
Do you do you lose other funding if that rate goes down? Because don't you guys get other funding?
We get less money. Fire protection.
Fire protection, because if you lose more money, the insurance goes down.
So when we went from a five to a four, in general speaking, I'm I'm not saying you saved it, but as a group, as the citizens, we dropped the insurance rate about a million dollars. That's for commercial business, residential, it dropped at about a million dollars. And we gained more money from the state. And what LT is saying is if we go from a four to a five, okay, your insurance is gonna go back up and the state's gonna say, guys aren't doing good enough. And they're gonna pull their money back and they're gonna say, you guys need to step up and do some more. Exactly. And then and that's what what we're trying to um, you know, bring to you today and and this paperwork that LT put together. There's an understanding that there's fire protection fund, okay? There's, you know, no disrespect to the police department, but there is no entity, no entity, let me repeat that. No entity in the city that gets their own funding like the fire department, okay? Through fire protection. They they don't get that, we get that, okay? The parks department don't get it, the water department don't get it, they have to, they have to generate their own revenue. We get this based on how good we are, how good our equipment is. So we do continue our training, we do continue our our uh aspect of getting better at our job. Um, and through that, if we have a ladder, obviously that's gonna improve that number or keep that number um improved. I will entertain any questions that have to do with ISO, fire protection fund. Um, and granted, we're not, we're not saying that the city doesn't give us money. It gives us money for for a payroll and, but what we're saying is because we saved the city, we we're asking if the city support us on this part. Is there a way, is there a way that we can, we could, we can not spend fifteen thousand? Maybe we can spend more and get a better truck.
Can you, can you explain the scenario of ladder truck? Because maybe audience know that a ladder truck is you put a ladder because you have to take that kid from the second level. That's not what you guys use a ladder truck for, or you use ladder truck for?
You know, it it it's it's that, it's, you know, it it also, you know, does the, so in order to have a ladder truck, you have to have certain criteria in the city, buildings that are above a certain height, okay? So what the city or what the state and the ISO do is they say if you if you don't have a ladder truck, then you can't, you can't do your job correctly. Does that make sense? I'm trying to kind of do it with not throwing in all the fire department lingo, but if they say, okay, you have so many buildings or so much criteria and you guys can add in here. So much criteria that states that you have ladder truck and when you don't have this ladder truck, the 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 funding goes away. But I mean, from fire protection to rescue to, um, you know, it's pumper operations, it's, I mean, there's a number of things in a ladder truck that's.
Safety wise, because I I had seen a scenario when you guys, we were riding bikes up to a friend's house above the water tank. Some, uh, five months ago and I seen you guys on top of a roof.
Right, yes.
Seen you grinding because you guys have the great ventilation, correct? You have men on top of roofs that are homes that are probably a hundred years old.
Right.
So safety wise, a ladder truck goes up in there safely and that's pretty new guys in safe, safe parts.
Ultimately, that's the same, safety is.
Because I seen you guys up there, I was like, that's dumb, but you guys didn't have ladder?
Right. Well, and and in that case, um, that particular fire, would our ladder truck have helped us? Probably not. Because of the location of the fire, the demographics that were up on the Loma, um, but um, our safety is number one, especially when we're looking at Vista Mesa Villa for rescue. Um, we're looking at uh the Loma Cana apartments, we're looking at the grants apartments. Yes, we have ladders, we'll throw ladders, we do throw ladders in training, we have twenty-four foot ladders. Um, we are required to carry one thirty-five foot ladder. So the problem with one thirty-five foot ladder is you put it up, they have to have a secondary egress. Our ladder truck is gonna be our, should be our secondary egress. Our ladder truck will get us up into places quicker, taller. The church on Cordova, I'm not sure what church it is, it's right there across from the grants apartments. Um, the way the steepness is of that church, if we had to vent that, again, that's a safety issue for our firefighters. Am I gonna put a thirty-five foot ladder up there against that steep building? And I don't have a secondary for him, so he's gonna go up there and he's gonna make his vent cuts and he's gonna come back down. That's the best case scenario. But if I have my ladder truck, he's tied off, he's up there, he's working on a safe area. Um, we've used it for large incidents, um, on fires that we're just gonna get a hold of. And when you're working a fire with six or seven personnel, sometimes you have to go defensive. So we'll go up above and we'll start knocking fire down. Um, when we, not only would it be used here in Grants, when we think of our, and we'll use with other agencies. Milan is a prime example. We're gonna go up over to Milan and when there's a great big propane tank that's burning and everybody scatters and the fire department comes in, all right, great, that's where our job is. We're gonna go in there, but we're gonna be able to safely go up above and start cooling that tank down. Um, the business that burned a few years ago on six oh five, um, definitely a ladder truck would have been helpful to us on that. Our ladder truck was broke at the time, so we weren't able to utilize it. Um, we had to use ground master trains. So we're gonna be able to put this in play. And then if we want to even go farther, the railroad, the interstate. They're all carrying methyloxylinia stuff and if it's on fire, again, set up water casters with our MOU departments in the area. And so it's not just four building, the dynamics are huge. And and just to remind you, we're, you know, I take pride in it, we're the big brother of the the county. I mean, when the county has some stuff going down, they call Grant's Fire. I mean, they they rely heavily on us without Laguna and Acoma, we're the only paid fire department in the county. I mean, and and when they call on us, they need a ladder truck or they need a rescue from a hundred-foot tree, you know, they, there, that's, it's there and you know, and that's why we're asking, we're not, we're not asking.
We're not waiting cats with a ladder truck. We're not rescuing cats with a ladder.
That's what I mean. Like cats, but the ladder truck is so.
And we have numerous arguments. So I send a guy up there and he goes against a cat and falls and breaks his leg, we have a work with his comp deal and that's the silliest thing for a firefighter. But at the same time, I've got thirty citizens standing there going, we pay your salary. Or you're gonna go, you know, so we try to do the best we can, you can only shake, I mean.
A cat will come back down, guys.
You know what, I I've only seen a skeleton of a cat in the tree once and that's, you know, it's okay. But uh, no, we we do take into considerations if possible, now you see where you're going with it. But it is safety, I mean, if 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 it's gonna put the firefighter or.
Put yourself in jeopardy over a cat.
Andrew, on this one, or chief coming to bed. On this one that you want to buy, is it, is it a good truck?
Well, we 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 didn't come tonight with a specific truck because obviously with those kind of numbers, you have to go out for bid, you have to, you know, there is some criteria that you have to follow. For me to come and give you pictures and say, I want this truck, it's almost impossible to say, you know.
So I had a question.
Yes.
We had a ladder truck, so do we still have an old one that, what are we doing with it and?
Would you have it, it it was, we had, we have to come in every five years, they come in and they test it. Our ladder portion of the ladder truck is done. It is, it didn't pass and the cost to repair it is beyond what even the truck itself, the truck will still pump water, but repairing that ladder portion, we're we're gonna be spending a lot more money on a nineteen eighty-eight truck. We didn't come here tonight to say, can we have a hundred thousand dollars? By no means did we do that. I think what my goal and Lieutenant Valencia and Chief Hayes is this is gonna be an ongoing process. We might meet again in a month, but can we have some leeway? Is there any way that the city can help us out and if there's a number thrown at us, we can start looking in that general area, maybe it's a sixty thousand dollar truck. And I'm not, like the, like Lieutenant Valencia said, he didn't want to bring a picture of this is the one we want.
Okay, but we're here tonight because the chief said he had money for a truck.
We have fifteen thousand dollars, we can go buy this other truck there. Yes, sir, you're one hundred percent correct. We can go buy this truck used from Burnleal and that is that is a correct statement. Lieutenant Valencia and I are about to talk to the chief and ask him if we could come give a presentation. Because would you agree with Laura, it is an older truck, can we look at something different, correct? Kind of where you were going with that or?
Kind of wait.
So we are going to get re-inspected this year, twenty twenty. So twenty twenty, we were supposed to get it re-inspected for our ISO rating. Covid, everything goes off Covid, they decided, no, cancel it. So we're expecting them to come end of twenty twenty-one, August of twenty twenty-one. So we are looking, uh, is, doesn't have to be now, it would be great. I'd love to go buy a ladder truck tomorrow. But do we want to buy the fifteen thousand dollar one or can we look and find something a little more credible, but?
When's the next PRC grant that's might be available to help with the purchases?
So if we applied this year for a grant, it it wouldn't go until next fiscal year. So so it would be twenty twenty-two.
So what if we just buy this fifteen to hold you over and try to grant it up and try to?
We'll chime in for a second. I did apply for a grant this past year looking for a replacement ladder truck. The specifics from the PRC group, Spitz, they just told me they're buying a used piece of equipment. I turned them and said, are you gonna give me two million dollars, I'll go buy a brand new one. But the grants are only worth two hundred thousand dollars. So the criteria fell through, I was not able to to do that. I went to a little bit process, the whole nine yards, found a nice unit, we think, from New Lisbon, Wisconsin. That's a hundred forty-seven thousand dollars from a hundred and eighty-four thousand. I talked them down.
What's the maximum PRC grant that you can possibly get?
Two hundred thousand.
So you can get two hundred thousand, what's the realistic of us getting something like that sometime?
So probably a two percent chance.
Two percent chance.
The problem with that, the problem with that, when you get a PRC grant, you have to buy a new piece of equipment. So engine three, engine five, engine six, just for example, they were bought new, they were over two, well, they were in a ballpark of a hundred and eighty-five thousand to two hundred and twelve thousand dollars. So we're paying fifty-four thousand dollars out of our fire protection fund to make that payment. So if we get the approval to say, okay, you're gonna go buy a ladder truck, great, we're gonna give you two hundred thousand and you're gonna eat the the, whatever the rest could be, two hundred more, three hundred more.
A ladder truck is five hundred thousand?
A ladder, they could be, we could start here. Really, you could start it at two hundred thousand.
Fifteen thousand, fifteen thousand and go up like.
Do you guys think that there might be a possibility that county and village and maybe some of our other partners might chip in to get a group one, because you're saying that they utilize all of our equipment, basically. I know they do our extrication equipment, all of that, but I don't know if we could do like a group.
Yeah, like the county, the county.
A group purchase for some things that's being utilized.
You know, that's right, why don't you guys, that's a good idea. Hit up the county, since we do ninety percent of their flyers, we respond all over the county for them.
Well, they do respond back to us though, so I mean.
Respond back to us, and how?
They they bring us personnel, they bring us equipment, they bring us water, they basically like Milan, we have an automatic aid with them, so when they have a structure fire, we go automatically. When we have a structure fire in Grants, they come automatically. And believe me, Mayor.
That's me not, but not the county.
No, I get it. County does too when we asked them. Yes, they do, yes. And believe me, you know, when you, when you go.
If we're responding to the county and we're the big brother.
If we're responding to the county, and we're the big brother to the county, the county needs to give us some money for the fire truck.
Well, we could try, but here, here's the thing, is what I'm saying with that, is that not only. It goes back into the ISO thing, you know, there, you have to have, if you got a big fire, you have to have big water. And when, and when they ask that, how good is our water system here, guys? Can you get mutualized, can you get tankers from the county, can you get tankers from your, so there's, there's a lot of criteria and a lot of, of dynamics that are involved in that, just not.
Hey, come bring your fire truck.
Right, they always keep our four.
I wonder if it's a joint purchase or a joint effort, does it improve their ISO as well?
It won't, because we would have the vehicle here, not in there.
They would have to be probably within a certain distance.
They get points as well for having automatic aid, just like you.
But they get points based on what their equipment is, what their water system is, what personnel is, just the same way we do.
But we can't wait a little while, right?
Till we gotta get it for August.
If you guys want money from the city right now, we didn't budget for this.
No, no, we totally understand.
We haven't done any of that, so I mean, I don't have a problem with it, as long as we have the money, period.
So, would it be a better, would it be a recommendation, not better, would it be a recommendation to try to get this truck from Burnaleo for now? And then look in the future, next budget cycle or something, what, what is your thought process there?
Well, the PRC, I mean, you'd have to buy that new, right? And they would give you a full twenty, two hundred and fifty thousand, but you would have to.
No, they only give two hundred, that's the maximum.
Two hundred thousand, so they would give two hundred thousand.
And, and, and a truck to last more than a few years, we, we buy something and we hope it lasts twenty years, that's the criteria that I look at.
We, we hope to, but according to ISO and NFPA, we have to replace those every ten years.
That is, for this kind of stuff, like loans for kind of stuff like this?
No, we're budget. I have, I have a loan right now that's paying for the rescue truck and Engine six at present.
Also, we're paying on that scale.
So, what if we get the cheaper one for now, and then we get our ISO rating and keep looking for funding, but I'm thinking. You know, in a year, if we wanna sell it, there's probably some other small municipality that we could sell it to, or close to what we're buying it for.
I wholly agree with, I just.
You know, and I agree, I think that, that.
That makes perfect sense.
Technically, what I wanna do is, I wanna talk to Burnaleo, to Burnaleo, because when you buy fire protection equipment, you can't sell it to another agency. You have to say, you know, I'll give it to you for a dollar, so we, we.
That's what they're supposed to do, right?
That's what they're supposed to do, now, man, everybody needs Covid, everyone's gonna use Covid as a excuse, but. We can, we can talk to them, I mean, obviously, they're gonna have to wanna recoup some of the money that they spent, you know.
And was it bought on fire protection funds?
Say, we'll come and do our puppet show for you.
So, I mean, it might not have been. It might not have been purchased.
Here's my suggestion, chief, buy the fifty thousand dollar truck and we'll see what we can do next, right?
Because I, I got the approval from the state already to expend the.
I mean, that's what I say, guys, how does the council feel? I said, we buy the fifty thousand dollar truck, and then see where we're at.
The price of a truck in Burnaleo is fifteen grand?
That was, that is the maximum that I will offer, I'm gonna start at way over than that.
Try lower, have you checked the ladder on it, I mean, have you guys gone over this?
Everything is passed, yeah.
Okay.
They would not allow me to use my.
I think you're guys.
Is it longer than your ladder, the old ladder truck that you have now? Is it longer, the ladder?
No, it's the seventy.
And it will reach, it will reach the majority of every building that we have in town?
It's gonna be a lot better than the fifty we have right now.
It's a seventy-five?
It's a seventy, what we look at when we, when we talk about, do we need a hundred and one foot, no. But we have to, when we put a ladder truck up, if that ladder truck's going up, it's for a serious reason, and we have to look at collapse zone. So, we have to make sure that we can park our ladder truck farther away from the structure, or whatever we're dealing with, that if it does collapse, our guys aren't affected and the truck itself isn't affected. So, seventy foot right now is actually a lot better than the fifty footer we had before. That's my suggestion, guys.
Well, I have a question, it's not related to the purchase, but it's kind of related to the insurance. You said that it, it brings our ISO rating to where it helps the insurance, right? That's, that's, is that all insurance?
That's everybody, that's, that's what the city pays for insurance, I mean.
Now, now, that, does that, do these insurance companies review the different cities on, on how, how well prepared they are for stuff like this?
That's what the number means.
Yes.
That's what the number's for.
Yeah.
Yes.
But, you know, like, let's say for instance, an individual's saying, well, how come my insurance is so expensive? You know, can they call their insurance company and say, do you know that our ISO rating is blah, 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 number four? Or is it something that they, they know automatically?
Their insurance rates are, are already predetermined by the fire department rating, so if we get a four.
It's posted.
It's posted to the insurance companies, and that is the maximum they can charge you, does that make sense? They already reflect those changes way before the citizen will ever know.
So, that fifteen thousand dollars that you already say you have, right? In your opinion, would that be a good purchase at this point?
At this point, if, if, if you're saying what you're telling me, that you're willing to purchase a newer one or a new one later on down the line, it is a good purchase. Now, Danny, I wanna go see it for myself, because.
Well, you said that this comes from Burnaleo, the village of Burnaleo, right?
Yes.
And they're buying an eight hundred thousand dollar?
They already bought it.
How many?
They already bought it.
Well, I was looking the other day on the internet, Burnaleo population wise is not very much higher than Grants, they don't have ten thousand population in Burnaleo.
You got Rio Rancho, Burnaleo, you got.
But that's, but that's not, but that's the way, that's the way it's listed.
That's the corner where Burnaleo sits right now.
It's the G R T. And so, so through ISO Fire Protection Fund, anything, you have your city limits, and anything five miles outside your city limits, we're required to go. We don't have a choice, we can't say, hey, it's, it's three hundred feet outside.
Basically.
That's basically how Burnaleo.
Can afford an eight hundred thousand dollar?
And the same fact is, they can also go to the state and say, this is why we need it, you know, give us money, give us money, yeah, exactly.
And we'll go back a little bit for ISO, with the requirement that they say that if you have X amount of buildings over thirty-five feet to the apex, you must have a ladder truck. We have those buildings here in town, we also have seventy-five other two-story buildings. It's hard to realize that if you don't run around and count them all, of course, that's my job to count stuff. So, those also would be reflected in why we request a ladder truck for this size in town. So, and, and also, the public capacity also to our, our total public need for our community as well.
And where, where he's going with that is that ISO requires this particular fire department at a class four to have so many pumpers. And that ladder truck will be in that criteria.
I believe it's four, right now, we have to maintain, we have to maintain.
We have to maintain four, so anytime we have that misbalance of something that's out of, you know, an older truck, we have to rotate it out and buy another one, but we gotta wait six months. You know, we're, we're, we're balancing that ISO rating.
How old is this truck?
It's a ninety-three.
Ninety-three?
And you said it's gotta be changed out every ten years?
Well, ISO recommends you change out your units every ten years, obviously, in a city like us, we can't do that, we have to, we gotta stretch it to twenty years. You know, like Albuquerque, they could probably rotate them out every ten years.
They might do trucks every year.
You know, but.
Look at Albuquerque, see if they got any.
Yeah, but they run their trucks into the ground.
Yeah, that's what I was telling you about, dude.
The smaller truck.
The smaller trucks are in better shape because they come from towns like us, the bigger trucks are cheaper, but they're beat up, you know, that make sense?
Yeah. I'm curious, if you're talking about ISO rating to bring down insurance, we went to a four, how long we been a four and is it realistic to ever get to a three?
If you give me twenty-five more people, yes.
Okay, that's, that's what it takes, twenty-five more people to get that, that big of a jump?
Yes, and not exaggerating, because the next jump up from a three, two to a one, personnel, code enforcement, training, and equipment.
And there's only one ISO in, one in the state right now, I think that.
There's two, Albuquerque and Las Cruces.
Albuquerque, Las Cruces.
Do they have a three?
Do they have a ISO one, so, you know, but they have the budget to protect that ISO one, and we don't, you know. And I'm not saying that it's not feasible.
And then part of the ISO is we maintain, each firefighter is maintaining two hundred and forty hours of training a year.
Well, I say that, you go and look at this truck, and maybe kind of keep your eyes open and see if there's others that are similar in that price range, that might be made in New York or.
I ain't gonna offer it later.
We could, I could, I could find one in the neighborhood of the ninety-three, ninety-five, in probably better shape. I mean, if that's what you want me to do, I can, I, I can go out there and find something.
But they're, they're forty to sixty thousand.
Yeah, they're forty to sixty, you know, realistically, to get a newer truck, probably about a ten-year newer, two thousand and three, we're looking about sixty thousand.
Okay, so that could be budget, this fifteen, just do that one, and then here we can budget something maybe around that sixty-five to seventy within a year, hopefully, we can find that ten-year truck.
But, but that's what I'm telling you, we're continuing, if we're buying this used one, then next year, we're gonna get funded to buy another.
Oh, you're talking about eventually that.
Yeah, where, where are we, where are we continuing this to?
I would love to ask our, our representatives of senators and say, if we have the extra money in the next year or so, can we have a eight hundred thousand dollar grant or?
We could do that on our legislative request.
I think that's what Burnaleo did.
They probably, huh? True, true, so we could work on that aspect.
But I mean, for us, for them, for us to go to them, probably doesn't carry as much weight as maybe the councilors, the mayor, and the city managers going to the, you know, the legislature asking for that kind of thing.
That's gotta go on our I C I, that is gotta go on.
And really, we're willing to wait on that, but I just don't see, and I, I mean, they may disagree with me, I don't see us buying a used one and then going to get in a year or two. Budget-wise, and buying another used one, it just doesn't make sense.
Eventually, they get tired of us coming to ask for a ladder truck.
Yeah, but if you buy this one, two years down the road, you can get your better one, you sell this one, right?
I'd like something a lot newer.
Well, we all would, chief, I'm driving a two thousand and nine truck in a two thousand and six Jeep, we all like new stuff, bro. Did they cost you a quarter million dollar? No. Thank God for that, my house don't even cost me a quarter million dollars, guys.
So, so what is the, what is the consensus, and what?
I say buy the fifteen thousand dollar truck and wait and see what happens, guys, we have no clue where we're gonna be at in six months right now. They're talking about closing prisons, guys, the federal government and the state, I have been in these state hearings with these people in the Rio Grande corridor, they do not care about anybody that is not from Santa Fe to Las Cruces, guys. Period, I have been in these hearings for the last two weeks, and it's not looking good.
Well, I've been in it thirty-one years and, and in the fire service, and it is.
I'm just telling you what's happened to the legislature, that, and what's going down here in our town. Guys, we're down eighty-six families, easy, just the closing of the power plant, the coal mine's next in the next three years, it will be dead, and it will be closed, and that's another four hundred jocks. If they close these two prisons, guys, like they're talking.
Right.
We're done, we ain't gonna be able to port the wastewater treatment plant, much less anything else. So, I mean, that's where we're at, guys, and that's why I'm saying, purchase this truck and we'll see where we're at in another year. The state's not giving no money this year, I mean, I've already been told that by every representative and every senator that I've spoken to up there over the last two weeks, from Patty Lundstrom all the way down to Harry, from the most senior to the most junior, from Joshua Sanchez all the way up to Ms. Dunhill, that wants to kill our prisons. They do not care, guys, the only ones that care are Josh Sanchez and Harry Garcia, Leo Combs, George Munoz. I'm sorry, guys, but that's where we are, so I say, my opinion, purchase this truck for whatever you can get, and we will see where we're at in six months in a year.
And I'd like to say is approve something here, too, the, with the fifteen thousand, and we'll try and get something a lot better than that.
There you go, guys. I'll let her take it, I'll let her.
Is there something like, if they're like within five thousand or something, of trying to get to that next level that we would?
Guys, Laura can approve everything up to twenty grand, okay, it's just like the, the next, the next deal on here, doesn't even be on the, on the agenda.
I can bring to the city mayor bureau, I have a list of.
There you go.
Let's just hurry up.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, we, go ahead, because it was here, so we need to make the council, make the motion to approve a purchase of a new truck, newer, newer truck, whatever, until we can see where we're at, guys. So, that purchase will leave open to the twenty thousand dollars that Laura can approve, without the councils bringing us back and doing this again. I'll let her take a motion.
I make a motion, they will approve what they can get, a newer truck, and then it's here, what happens in the next two years?
Second by Lucero, Councilor Garde.
Ah, yes.
Councilor Garcia?
Yes.
Councilor Cerro?
Yes.
Councilor Palia?
Yes.
There we go.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you guys for what you do, and Andrew Turner, thank you guys, I am dead serious, I am so glad to see you, brother.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Very glad to see you, make fine day.
And you did not put it to sleep.
Is this forty-five hundred dollars?
Forty-five thousand, sorry.
Forty-five thousand, yes.
This is number seven?
Number seven, uh, this is the purchase, actually, we haven't made this purchase in two years, uh, because the new waste treatment plant is putting out cleaner effluent, which means we're using less bleach, sodium hydrochloride, fancy word for bleach.
So, this is W, right?
Correct.
So, we use it every year, right?
Correct. So, uh, this is the company that produces bleach, it's the only one in the state of New Mexico, they have sole source letter, and so, we're asking for forty-five thousand dollars worth. Of bleach, and we expect that to last through, through the year.
Do you know, Mark, are they on the state contract, or?
I believe we asked the question.
They're the sole, sole services.
Well, the sole source letters from them, and it's really not appropriate to have it from them, it's, is, we have our own process, and I don't know if you've had a chance to talk with Francis.
Shannon shot this information over to Francis, and so, we'll make sure and double check with her.
Okay, so we can double check just to make sure.
Yes.
Any questions?
Call them, does it easily take, get it?
Uh, it's only about a two-week turnaround.
Two-week process?
Yeah, that's the.
Where does it come from?
Albuquerque is where they make it.
Oh, okay. So, it's easily accessible?
It is with the P O, yes sir. The last.
I'll let her take the motion.
I make the motion to purchase the sodium hydrochloride groundwater treatment plant?
Second.
Councilor Garde?
Yes.
Councilor Garcia?
Yes, sir.
Councilor DeSoto?
Yes.
Councilor Palia?
Yes.
Mayor, Mayor, for council, uh, secondly, before you is the groundwater monitoring and reporting, this is through C E S, the vendor we've used the last several years has been Southern Millard Associates. The third party is industry standard, when you're doing groundwater monitoring, so that way, there's no accusations of tampering with the, the sampling process. So, it remains independent, and the wells that are listed are surrounding the plant to ensure that the groundwater quality stays to the, the standards required. The amount before you is twenty-five thousand, hundred and thirteen dollars, fifty-five cents, that is for quarterly sampling and the report that's generated, which is sent its, into its entirety to the state.
Well, there's nothing here for your last quarter, perfect?
So, Mark, are we putting an R S P out every year for this?
No, so we put one out, and it's good for four years.
Okay, great.
Anything else?
And the groundwater reporting, you just, you mean it's all been pretty good, or you've been testing?
Yes.
If it wasn't, the state would be in our.
I'm just saying, we're doing, we're doing good now.
It would be right here.
Yes, I could show you, it's, it's much easier to show you the map and the nitrogen, if you wanna jump into that, I, I didn't come prepared.
No, 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 I'm just, I'm just curious.
Is we make it very, very transparent for the state to see, but there is some nitrogen that was getting out into the groundwater. And so, we, we do know that there's some leakage that's going on at, at the ponds from the golf course, as well as the old plant, which is why we got a new plant.
So, who does the sampling, is, do we do that?
Negative, this is, this outfit that we're paying twenty-five thousand a year to do it.
You have questions?
No.
Let this council.
Yes, we spent twenty-five thousand, make a motion that we, and that we pass this ground monitor, monitoring, uh, reporting for, what was it, twenty-five thousand?
One, one hundred and thirteen dollars.
One hundred and thirteen dollars.
Fifty-five cents.
Second.
Perfect.
Councilor Garde.
Yes.
Councilor Garcia.
Yes.
Councilor Cero. Councilor Fred Palia.
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor, for council.
Next, we'll overturn meetings resolution, guys. Uh, we changed this, we allowed boys to put stuff on the agenda. Um, we took all the power away from the mayor's office, the next mayor would like it back, I'm sure. But guys, I mean, if you look at that, where the lines are blocked out, I mean, I would like to bring it back to the way it was, guys, because it stops a lot of the stuff, and it creates a debate like it's supposed to happen over the agenda. I mean, for instance, agenda items for the regular city meetings, blocked out now, shall be set by the mayor or by a majority vote of the governing body. And instead, we changed that to where it says, may be submitted by the mayor, city councilor, or the city manager. We're the only municipality in this state that allows an employee to put something on the agenda. We're probably the only municipality in this country that allows an employee to put something on the agenda. She's not elected, guys. Period, we need to just go back, you guys, we changed all this and, and I don't know why. Because you guys were mad at me, because I changed, took all the agenda items off the one day, and you guys fixed it by voting it and doing what you wanted to do anyway, so why change it, guys? Employees should not be allowed to put stuff on the agenda, period.
What employees are we talking about? Don't we work with her?
Well, yes, and the point being is, is the mayor sets the agenda, always has been for this whole time that we've been in this spout.
Then who tells the mayor what wants to go on the agenda?
And, I mean, therefore, right there, I mean, like, for instance, Laura basically puts the whole agenda out, guys. Let's get very pretty honest about it, hang on. Then, if we do it the way it's supposed to be doing, I go through it, I look at it, and if I say, nah, this is, I don't want this, for instance, let's say tonight, um, we're not ready for the financing budget. We'll do that next meeting.
Yeah, but you go across it out, and we don't even get an opportunity to look at it.
You'll get to see the agenda beforehand, here's what we'll do then. We'll, we'll put it back the way it was, and we'll go back to a work session the week before the agenda. Because the way it is now, guys, all you did is just take the power away from the mayor, and take the power away from the council, and allow anything to go on the agenda that anybody wants on there.
I mean, what, I don't, I don't see.
We still have a voice. Yes, and you guys, and you still have a voice the other way too, but the other way, it puts out debate on the agenda, instead of us coming in here and having to do housecleaning and all this stuff, every, every meeting. Our meetings were down to an hour, guys, and since we've done this, we're back up to an hour and a half to two hours every night. I mean, you go through it and you look at where, where it was lined out, everything that is lined out is what the mayor was in charge of, guys. That's all you did, is just take stuff away from the mayor. And it's wrong, guys, it's supposed to be debated. It's not just supposed to be, anybody puts anything on there. If you want something on there, then you call me and I say yes, or I say no, and if I say no.
But I call you and you don't answer, I said, let's meet your times already, the only, you don't answer.
I do answer, Eric, but what you wanted to meet me about, I can't meet you with.
Why can't I just meet you to say what's up?
We can do that, but that's not what you texted me to meet about. I mean, you bet we can, guys, but I mean, you guys changed everything to protect the manager, you can protect her with your vote. You guys have already done that, there's no need to protect her. I mean, you guys have already protected her with their vote.
That's true.
I mean, so why change the, the Open Meetings Act, our rules, our own rules, to do this, guys, there's no reason to do this.
Well, my only comment on this is, I like it the way it is. That's formidable.
We can still debate, no matter what, we can still.
No, because, well, what it does is it'll, it'll come in here, and every meeting, I'm gonna have housekeeping items, guys. Like we have every meeting since we started this agenda stuff.
Housekeeping items that we have.
Fred.
I haven't seen no citizens that have put anything on there.
That's my whole point, the citizens didn't put this on there either.
Well, the citizens can't put it on there, it's only the council or the manager.
She's a citizen, she's an employee. Period, guys, she's not elected to nothing, that's the whole point here.
Well, she follows the directive of the mayor and the council.
No, not according to that, Fred, she can put anything she wants on the agenda.
Well, she wants to put in that too, that we wanna talk about something, then.
I would entertain a motion to bring back the old Open Meetings Act. Going once, going twice, going three times, due to, guys, due to lack of a second. Okay, closed session, my good God, you guys are amazing. I'll entertain a motion to go to closed session.
I'll make a motion to go to closed session.
Second, I'll favor say aye.
I thought you were going the long way then.
No, no, no.
I was really counting from Michelle, she's back there.
I'll entertain a motion, come back in, open session.
I make a motion.
Second, I'll favor say aye.
Aye.
Uh, that was a legitimate session. It actually was a legitimate closed session, guys, and, uh, no decisions were made, and nothing will be said about what was said in there, for tonight, okay? Maybe at the next meeting, when decisions are made. On that note, Laura, you got anything?
Yes, there's a resident that is interested in possibly purchasing, um, or interested in obtaining the old Jacobs building or O M B building on Wayne Street. So, I, um, they kind of, they thought about coming tonight, and they didn't, but they just are wondering, are we interested in, um, somehow getting rid of that piece of property?
Is it a business?
It's, um, it's the old building, and we're gonna demolish it, but.
No, no, but is it a business, I don't care.
Oh, a business?
You don't need to tell me the business, but is it, is it a business that's gonna create money for our grants?
Um, they do, they do have business in grants, so it could possibly, I don't know what they're looking at dealing with it.
Well, it's an ice source, so I guess it could not do any.
All we're gonna do is knock it down, because the building is not sound, the whole thing is shifted, it's sitting like this. The whole building is shifted.
Does it have asbestos and all that that we would say?
It does.
If we're gonna sell it, you don't have to worry about it.
Because what's the asbestos removal, that we have to weigh that out, where we pass, and blah, 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 which, blah, blah, so. At the end of the day, it's just an ice source, if they wanna do something like.
But, yeah.
But maybe it, but something where, that they buy it, but what's the, what's the time that they want to, is it a year, two years, I don't think, whatever.
Yeah, so they're, they're looking at getting appraisals to see what, because I, typically, we have to sell something for what is the premise, right? So, um, but they're, they're considering, we wanted to know if that was even an option.
I say it's an option. We were just gonna tear it down and leave it vacant anyway, why wouldn't we wanna get it back on the tax rules? So, everybody's good with that? You bet you, put it out there, anything else?
Unless we build something on there.
You got something?
What, what do you, what do you think?
Well, we, you know, we're talking about economic development, that we're always looking at.
Are they rushing, like they, like they wanna buy something?
No, no.
We've got other properties too, guys, we got the old jail up on the hill, we own all that property. We own Maribor Park out there on the Loma, on this side over here, that we vacated down and moved. As a matter of fact, my suggestion is we would just put parking out there and let the cops write their reports and stuff there. Because that park was nothing but drug activity anyway. So, I mean, we've got other properties. So, I say, yeah, move forward, it's Laura.
Got a question, Laura, um, where are we on that, on that land that we vacated? Is it still looking limbo somewhere?
Yeah, we're working with, um, the Meaches and our, the Department of Finance. Um, we had to get an appraisal, and it appraised relatively high, like twenty-six thousand.
Holy cow.
So, um, we're looking at maybe getting.
Well, that little strip.
Yeah, in that area.
For, for the roadway?
Yes.
God bless, I'm sorry, my house, man, sorry. My God, the property's good.
I know, um, that's what we found when we had to appraise those properties along the Rio San Jose for the Legacy Trail. A piece of what we consider junk property was appraising for thirty thousand.
We're still invested in people.
Yeah, so, um, Shannon's here tonight, I don't know if she wants to say anything, but she's been trying, or trying to go through the proper uh, DFA process, and, um, it's become a little bit of a nightmare, but.
So, when it appraised at over twenty-five thousand, we found out we have to sell it at the appraised price through the state, so.
They already did a lot of work going there.
I have a call in, me and Walter have talked about it already. Um, I have a call in to DFA, and I emailed her, I'm waiting to hear from her back, and then I'll get back with Walter, and then we're gonna go from there. And hopefully, we can get it worked out, hopefully, very soon.
Wow, cool, anything else, Fred?
Um, no.
Eric, did you have anything else more?
Yeah.
Eric?
You know, we got the quad coming up, right, and, and the quad, it, it brings people into our town, obviously, this year we're not gonna have it, so. Uh, we are still gonna have, uh, we can't hold anything, but they're still gonna do a virtual ride, I don't know how they're coordinating it, they still do stops where they pick up coins along the way, because they still wanna encourage people from out of town to come and, and play around in our town and our mountain, so. Obviously, the, the quad is a really big, fun event, it's just unfortunate that this year we can't have it, so. If you see some bikers still around, you know, those are the ones that come in out of town or in town that still wanna make the effort of doing the ultimate challenge, because it is fun, so, uh, watch out for those people. Riverwalk cleanup, you know, obviously, I've been around here cleaning up a little bit, I think, um, just needs a little bit of sprucing up, but I wanna thank the city crew, sometimes I end up leaving more of a mess than I can handle, so. Uh, they have to come help me here and there to take some of the trash out, so thank you to the city crew who asks me all the time. And, that's about it.
Fred?
Uh, yeah, I have something, um, you, you have a plan to finish up, um, Ederman and High Street, that is.
Yes, gas and gas shake, yes.
Yeah, I don't winter, but.
Right, I think they did that one little section, and then it hit where there was no more asphalt being made, so.
By the century system?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, so they did that one spot, so they was craving water somewhere, so, um, they ended up finding where they, 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 where they found it, and so then they, they did that one spot. So, they subgraded it, they did everything right since the first, what they did the other time, so how the, the, the cross is, so. Hopefully, uh, in springtime or whenever, we can get that, but they wanted to do that first section, because they didn't wanna repave it again, and the water, and it starts to break up, so that spot's been there for probably three months now, and it still looks pretty good, so hopefully, we can go to the next spot, so have patience with those people out there by the century, so I know you go over it, and I think about it every time, you're like boom, 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 but there is a method why we've done it that certain way, because we keep pissing away money because of water issues underneath, so, uh, Mark and his team have been doing a great job with that.
Yeah, there's, there's a few potholes out there, I don't know if we can send a crew out there and just fill them up, and just maybe a little more.
Yeah, we, we put in some more quarters today, there were citizens calling, yeah, and I think Chris mentioned too, to Mark, that there was some potholes.
Fred? Got a couple of questions, maybe I misunderstood you, Laura, well, well, number three, we're good to go on?
Yes, we are.
We got the approval to. I think Mark was gonna go with, walk through with the guy?
Yeah, they had a meeting, was it Tuesday, I think, that they were, um, getting the, the contractor, and then Jacobs and everybody out there to talk about the plan. But I contacted the state level and just made sure that, they said they put language in our agreement that we could start before it, we have to have the ordinance, will be on your next meeting, and, um, we have to have that process, but they, they know that that's an emergency, so they said to proceed.
And, uh, Senator Sanchez said that we will be reimbursed as we go. As we pay our bills, they will reimburse us. And, I mean, I was on the.
I know, because in the last meeting, we were, right?
Yeah, no, I was, I've been, guys, I've been in the legislature for two weeks now, every day, every single day. That's one of the things that was discussed, was well number three. Of course, it's not gonna be done before August, that's why I was so concerned about fresh water on the golf course.
Hmm.
Okay, because that's a lot of water to be pumping out on the golf course.
Yes.
Especially if we're gonna be limping, watering a town, okay? That was my biggest concern about.
I do that, uh, the well number three, I know we discussed it, but I don't know what, you can send me an email, but. Another thing, another question. Uh, last meeting, we tabled municipal transit system. We should get it out as soon as possible, those people are willing or whether we give them whatever we approved, or we budgeted for, we have to at least have the courtesy to let them know.
Let's just go ahead and put that on the, on the next meeting, and give them the same cut that we gave economic development. Period, give them the exact same cut, the same thing goes for the COG, the Arts Council, every one of these nonprofits that we're giving money to, go ahead and get them all laid out with the same cut that we gave economic development, and we'll deal with them individually as they come up. Okay, as they come up, as we get closer to the budget, because the COG might be one of them that we don't wanna cut, but we still need to put it on there. I mean, the Arts Council, I've got no problem. Um, the economic development, I have no problem with, I've got no problem with cutting the, the transit, okay? Do we wanna kill it all the way? No.
No.
But we've got to take care of what we're doing here, so, yeah, just go ahead and have it on the next meeting, and have that same cut that you have for the economic development for that one. And then the county and the law can see what they're gonna do to match us, or pick us up, whatever they're gonna do.
The county gives money to.
Yes, and the state does for the transit.
Yeah, the state does, you know, and that's something that Joe Biden is talking about, he's, oh, we're gonna get money in the COVID relief for transportation. So, they might get money from the federal government, where we won't get any, and we'll lose jobs, but they might get money for a transit bus. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay, I've got a couple of things, uh, the prison closings I already brought up, they're all advised. The green jobs, guys, there are no green jobs. So, I mean, I don't know what we're gonna do there, we need to start, besides just me, calling the legislature. Not our people, because they know what we want, that Rio Grande Corridor. They're easy to find, they're all on the internet, and I've been in there here now for two weeks since this thing started, guys. So, and if you need pass codes to get into them, call Joshua, call Patty, call Harry, and they'll give you a pass code to get into the meetings, where you can go and, and you get to go into the zoom room.
Do you have to have a passcode?
Yes, you gotta have a passcode to get in. I have to have a passcode to get in the judicial meetings for the prison hearings. I have to have a pass code to get in the judicial meetings for prison hearings.